Okay, I'm gonna call our regular meeting to order. And I'm gonna ask Laurlee to call the roll again.
Stu Boyd.
Here.
Denise Chapman.
Here.
Amy Doran.
Here.
Don Kirk.
Here.
Barbara Cruz.
Here.
Alexandra Lessen.
Here.
Nancy Rumphil.
Here. Thank you. We set the pledge for the first one, so we're gonna jump into approval of the agenda for this one. So I am seeking approval for the agenda for our regular meeting study session tonight, January 3rd, 2024. Are there any changes to the agenda? Hearing none. I will take an, gosh, let me try this again. I will need a first and a second for approving the agenda.
Some seconds.
So who was that? Don and Denise. All right. So Laurlee, call the roll, please.
Stu Boyd.
Aye.
Denise Chapman.
Aye.
Amy Doran.
Aye.
Don Kirk.
Aye.
Barbara Cruz.
Aye.
Alexandra Lessen.
Aye.
Nancy Rumphil.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes, and we will move into school presentation.
So this evening, we welcome Principal Rick Bowles. And as excited as we are to have so many people in tonight's meeting, I suspect they're here for this first portion of our presentations.
All right, so I'm gonna ask if you guys are okay if we use the mic for the kids, because I think that the parents probably wanna hear them and what they have to say. So first off, thank you for being here at River View. We appreciate having you. We have amazing students that are just gonna show you some things real quick that we've been doing in innovation. Keep in mind that we have 16 days off. And so when we talk to these students about these great projects they're doing, I'm thinking, well, some of them might not wanna do it when they're still on break. They all were excited to come out and share with you all of the great things they're doing. And so I'd like to go ahead and have them come on up. And I'm gonna let you guys use the mic so that your parents can hear what you have to say.
All right, well, we're really excited to have these groups present. They have a couple of projects from their innovation class they're gonna share with you. And we're gonna start here with first grade, who's been learning how to do some coding. So Matias is gonna show us how to code a mouse. Are you ready? Okay. I think there's a slide, too, that kinda goes with Hacksburg. Okay? Here. Okay. Let's give it a try. Okay, and then we have two groups of fourth graders who have been learning how to use hexbugs. And they're gonna talk to you a little bit about the design thinking cycle.
In innovation, we have been talking about the design and thinking process. We know that all different kinds of people use these steps, like artists, teachers, engineers, musicians, and many, many more. The design thinking process may not be straight through, though. You may have to go back to different steps. We wanted a theme for our maze. When I was in kindergarten, I was really interested in Egypt and thought it would be a cool theme for that we could use. When we go to the arcade, there are always a lot of little kids who like to play games. So we wanted our maze to be all about fun. We had to think about our hexbug. We had to think about our hexbug. Will it be too hard for it to get through the maze? Will it be able to make the turns? Will it be too easy or too hard? We had to think, what does the hexbug want if it was a person? Would it be bored? How can we help it go through our maze? We needed to sketch out our adoptions before we started to gather materials in our group. We had to communicate together to come up with a plan that fit our theme. We really wanted to make sure our maze was fun, so we had to work together to make sure our ideas were all about fun. We needed to collect all the materials at home, even fluff other dog toys. We wanted to reuse materials so we weren't being wasteful. After our prototype, we had to make sure we had all the materials ready before we started to build. Sometimes we had to make changes when the hexbug couldn't go through the maze obstacles. We kept thinking about the kindergartners and first graders and how to make it fun We are excited to have our maze tested by the kinder and first graders so they can share with us what they think and how we might change the maze. We hope they are interested in our maze and like our Egyptian theme. We'd like to hear what theme in the design room by next time. If we had to do this whole challenge again, we'd like to talk to our audience first and guess some ideas for them, ideas from them, of what they would like.
So this first group made a dance party maze. Yeah, I know it's hard to see into the box, but there's a lot of decoration in there and a maze that our hexbug has to go through. So they're gonna let the hexbug run, even though you kinda can't see it in there. It's pretty cool. Come check it out after. Can't see it from there, but it's dancing inside of the box. You can hear it dancing. Great job today. And this team has their Egyptian-themed maze.
You know what? Might we walk over and look at it?
Yeah, yeah.
Do you think there's one more?
Hi, we're from Mary School, TED. Our teacher's Ms. Christiansen, and we've been doing line drawings. So what we do is we find an image on the internet, and then we can put it in the keynote, and then use the draw tool to put, like, all the different lines over it. So that it, and then when we're done, we just group all of the lines together to make
Wow. Oh, it's just review.
See, I both made line drawings of birds of prey. He made the raptor logo, and I made a mockingbird.
It's amazing that they can do so.
Um, we started off with a plan, which Ms. Kirkland gave us. We had a certain amount of budget, and we had to build a table with a certain amount of budget, so we had to look up everywhere where we could get all the parts. But it was under, it had to be under a hundred dollars, even though we ended up going with a plan that was a little bit over a hundred dollars, like twelve dollars over. But we had to draw blueprints of it that had our measurements on it, and then we had to show where we got all the parts from, like the wheels and the plywood and stuff.
And then we started with the frame, and then we, yeah, we pretty much just built it. These are some pictures of us building it.
How long did this take?
Uh, it was like eight weeks.
Four weeks?
No. Not four. It was like six weeks. No, we started on Friday. We started on Friday. It was like six weeks. We started on Monday. She started with the Guinness. We started with plans on Thursday, though. That one week.
So what's the little sticker stay on the front? What's it, your label say?
Table made by 10th class of Semester 1, 2023.
Awesome. Nice. Very cool.
Oh, yeah, and we all sign our names on the, like...
So what's gonna happen to the table?
It's gonna be a workbench for the class. For the song.
What's on top of it?
Oh, these are just papers.
Pictures?
Oh, okay.
Cool.
All right. Awesome job.
Thank you.
That's right. I say thank you so much, parents, for getting everyone here tonight. I know you were gonna come to the school board meeting anyways, because that's what you wanted to do last day of break. But thank you so much, thank you to the school board, Dr. Schaefer. We appreciate you, and I'll let you guys get back to your room.
Thank you. Thank you. Bye. All right. You're welcome to stay, but you don't ask her. All right. Thank you, you guys. That was great. All right, so moving on now to our, I'll wait just a minute till they're all, where are the cookies? I'll have a cookie, please. Okay. All right. I would love it. Here's, yeah, napkins coming. All right, we will move on to the discussion items for the upcoming board meeting, which is in two weeks. I don't know what the date would be. Seventeen, thank you. These are, follow that same format we used before, once an item has been discussed. As far as, we'll just go around, and if there are questions that are coming up, then we'll each have one question, and then we'll see if we need to go around again a second time. So the first item that we're gonna work with is, and there's a lot of these, but they're all kind of, there are minimal changes, too, for the first 13, 12 items, basically. They're just real quick little updates. And we'll turn to Melissa, and it looks like she has company with her. All right.
Good evening, Madam President, School Board members, and Dr. Schaefer, Melissa Schneider, Chief Academic Officer. And with me, I have Tom Trashara, who is Director of Human Resources. Learning Services and Human Resources have collaborated on a revision of the suite of policies that you have been submitted. So you can go on to the next slide there, Laurlee. Just connecting and describe 2025 and enacting the educational equity policy. You can go on, I will give you some background here. It is the Colorado Community College system that did a check on us in 2022, a monitoring visit for our OCR practices. And they go through our policies, they go through just different things, and they called us out on a few things that we needed to update and revise. So four main findings: incomplete communication of annual notice of nondiscrimination, incomplete communication of required information and coordinators for compliance, partial noncompliance in grievance procedures, and partial noncompliance in Title IX grievance procedures. So these were specifically their recommendations to us and which policies we needed to do this for. So we'll read all of this to you, but this was basically directly from their findings for us to do these things to these specific policies. And we literally just did exactly as we were asked. And so you have those revisions in front of you. They are not necessarily content revisions, but revisions in the language that were, that they were called out in their findings. And so I know that there are a lot of policies, but do you have any questions around what we gave to you for this particular finding from OCR?
Kinda do these one by one, real quickly?
You sure can, however you'd like.
That's what we need to do to make it complete? I think so. So you wanna just work through them, or do you want me to just call them up?
I think if you call them out, we can take any questions one by one.
I do actually have one for, like, the process and kind of the suite. So, um, so the process when they did the audit, it looks like it's policy-related. Did they look at anything besides policies? Did they look at practices as well? Or was it really focused in on what was missing from or inaccurate?
Yeah, it was focused on policy and any communication that we have through handbooks, web-based communication, those kind of things. It's really about being compliant to how they interpret either the state or federal regulations that we're living under, and how we are communicating that to students, staff, community, and parents.
And then similarly, what struck me is that we have, how many you counted, 12 or 13, that are all being, well, not all, but many of them are being updated with the same information. And what concerns me about that from a process standpoint is that there are so many places we have to update it anytime something changes. And I like that this was simplified so that it's title, not name, but I still was, like, the thing that struck me is if we only had that in one place, as like a go-to this to get the most accurate information on the website, where it's easier to update, then we wouldn't have 13 documents to update. So is there a reason we have to have it in 13 places?
That I don't know if I have an answer. The different policies are structured, some of the G policies, right, particularly are structured for personnel matters. The J policies are structured for student matters. And so one of the, I know one of the initial pieces of the audit that they were most concerned about is our definition of certain aspects were not consistent. And it goes to your point that, you know, some of the policies had been revised over the course of years, because some of the J and G policies have been created for 34 years, and others are newer. And so job security, maybe, for school boards?
Great.
Yeah, it's, there are a lot of policies that reference very similar things. And then the policy versus the regulations, so that we can change those a little bit easier.
And exhibits. Yeah.
I'm not saying that we have to change it, but if we could simplify it, it sounds like something fun to do.
When you say that, Don, are you referring to this particular packet, or are you talking all of our policies? Because I started one day going through all policies, looking to see, okay, when was the last time this one was updated? And it took me half a day to weed through all of them and try to figure out, okay, does it need to be changed? Is it outdated and we just delete it? And how do you delete a policy?
Well, I was thinking pretty specifically for this, but just, but then overall, this process illuminates that when we embed something in policy that's as changeable as a title...
Well, I like the way they did it this time, because the title, at least we don't have a name on it.
Right. Which is a significant difference.
That is a huge help, because when we put the specific name in, then we had to go back through and find all of that. So the way you put them in this time makes way more sense for us.
Agreed. Agreed. Yeah, so I don't disagree with it, but I wonder if we, if it would be helpful to move the stuff that changes to a place where we can change it, to keep it updated? And then the policy references to say, the website will always have your contact information for complaints, especially since most of this is pointing to the same two positions? And we do change those titles. That's what concerns me, even as we take the name out, you know, we could promote, hopefully we do promote some amazing people, and then become a different title for the same thing. So I don't wanna create extra work, but I think this might create less work overall.
Is part of what we're talking about a question for legal?
Yeah, potentially, because some of the policies are straight out of state or federal regulations, and we have to follow with specific language that we have to follow.
Right.
And generally, it's presented to us with that language? Okay, so is there anything in particular that you guys had questions about on it? Can we do them as a group?
We're not rooting all these up.
No, I know, but discussion-wise, is it...
You could do it any way you want.
Okay, let's do this, so we can get going on this. Otherwise, we're gonna be here all evening. So the first one is the nondiscrimination equal opportunity. The only changes were the names of the format on the back, okay? All right, the next one was nondiscrimination. Oh, this was AC, and then it's AC exhibit one?
Yeah. Was the second.
And again, it's, they, there were pieces that, it was rearranged, it looks like, more than anything, but it's adding the names of the positions, and then the rest is kind of deleted. Then it was ACE2, same kind of thing. It's just the names of the people are put, the names of the position are put on. AC regulation, ACR, and it's just the qualifier that this is not intended to be used for Title IX. That's kind of the only difference. Am I right?
Yeah.
Okay, so it's just that one statement. We're gonna do this quick. ACR2 is...
Is it not included?
Yeah.
Oh, there was something on there, and I did it in pen. I don't see it. Does anybody have it?
It's not part of this.
It's not part of this group. I don't think we're making changes.
My mistake.
ACR2 at this point.
All right. Then GPA. GPA is the next one. There was a sentence deleted, and it was just taking that statement, which includes marital status, sexual orientation, genetic, and so on. That one that we typically see now says sex, sexual orientation, gender, and it just lists all of the printout of, the typeout of each one.
And that's to be consistent over all the policies.
All the policies, yeah. And then again, the positions. All right, GDE, GDF, has the people, positions at the bottom. That's all it was. JB, again, the same thing. JBP, it just adds... JBP, it just adds up at the top of the first paragraph. It says, "As addressed in board policy, AC and ACR2." That's the only change, basically. JF, there is again that, "The board, superintendent, administrators, and district employees will not discriminate based on," and it lines out each one of them, basically. Any questions on that one?
And the names were added, I think.
What?
The names were added, oh, sorry, the positions were added.
Yeah, the positions were added. I went through a lot of ink and paper, but it was the only way I was going to find it and be able to do it quickly. Nondiscrimination, there was a lot of the deleting and then the replacing of the specific. And the positions. JII, same kind of thing. It's just simply replacing. Then JIRR, there was a little bit of deleting and then adding the positions back in. And that was it. Okay? We will be voting on these next meeting.
Barb, could I ask a question related to them as a group?
Sure.
Are we looking at this, and are you bringing this to us because legal said we needed to do this? This is an update of our policies? Or what's the rationale bringing this?
To be in compliance with...
I'm sorry?
To be in compliance with OCR. It was, they did a check and a monitor on us, and this is their findings and so...
All right.
Yep. So yes, and so yes, legally, we would be out of compliance or compliance with OCR.
All right. So we got through all of those first pieces. And we are now ready for item on our agenda, which would be for 13, which is the DAC membership. So I'll turn that over to you now.
Okay.
Thanks, Tom.
Thank you, Tom.
Hey, anytime you need me to talk about 12 policies, it only takes about...
Well, we kind of zipped through a good one.
Are you okay for more time?
I appreciate it.
Let me switch gears here. All right. Thank you, everybody. So I'm going to move on to our District Accountability and Advisory Committee that's coming back to you. Strive 2025 Connection: Ensuring All Stakeholders Are Engaged in Effective Two-Way Communication. Can you all hear me if I project my voice a little bit more? This room is tough to get to hear in, so I'm going to...
That first session, I could hardly hear anything.
Be loud. Increase Alignment of Resources to Reflect the Needs Identified in Strategic Plan and Provide Transparency in the Use of District Resources. So I'm actually going to try to read off of my own paper copy so that my voice can go towards you a little bit more. So the purpose of this presentation is twofold. One, you had asked me to bring back a little bit more about membership, on our membership list of people interested in becoming members of DAC, as well as extend the amount of time that we could get in more interested members. And in addition to that, I feel as Chief Academic Officer, presiding over the DAC for now the second year, it was a learning for me to be able to understand current statutory requirements of DAC and be able to make sure that we're all on the same page. So I've got some things so that as you take a look at those who are interested in membership, you know what the requirements are and why we are submitting the list that we are. Okay. This slide you saw back in October, but just a real quick superficial responsibilities. This goes on at length in Colorado School Law Book. But in short, statutory requirements for the DAC is a committee that the Colorado Department of Education requires us to have as a district. We're responsible for providing recommendations to the local school board. Various topics, but not limited to our District Unified Improvement Plan, district priorities, family engagement, assessments, budget, and on and on. But human resources, we have a lot of DAC recommendations around recruiting and retaining. We had human resources presented at DAC just recently. But we center our presentations and our focus around our DAC recommendations, and those are our topics for the year. Family engagement is another one on our DAC recommendations as well. Our school board appoints the DAC membership, so that's TSD's Board Policy AE-R. So I'm citing that from our board policy. So statutorily, our DAC membership requirements are at least three parents of students enrolled in the district, at least one teacher employed by the district, at least one school administrator employed by the district, at least one person involved in business in the community, at least one person, sorry, at least one student. So if you count up that, that is three, four, five, six, seven members of a committee at minimum that the state statute asks for. So some statutory rules requiring the DAC membership. Members may only serve in one role. You can't come there and be both a parent and a teacher and count towards those two categories. You have to identify as one of those membership categories. If the board appoints more members than the maximum, or sorry, than the minimum requirement, so if, we just said there were seven people required on the DAC. If we, if you as a school board appoint more than that, then the number of parents must exceed any other group. Parents need to be the top population. Also, DAC members may not have a spouse or first-degree relative working for the district at its schools. It doesn't stop folks from attending. DAC is an open meeting. We welcome folks to attend. However, voting membership is limited to those who do not have somebody who is a first-degree relative, which is defined in statute as a spouse, a son or daughter, a sister, a sibling, that sort of thing, that works for the district. So additional statutory rules of the local school board appoints DAC membership. So to the extent practical, ensure that the parent membership is representative of the district's student population. And while I didn't list everything here that's in statute, they mentioned a few categories like students receiving free or reduced lunch, students learning English, students of color, students with disabilities or giftedness. It's highly desirable to have representation from the parent community of students that identify in those categories. These are not additional roles on DAC, meaning we have a seven-member DAC that is recommended. These aren't additional. It's just highly recommended that within that seven-member role on DAC that you can actually tie some of the membership to some of these categories here. Additional statutory rules, I don't know why I keep tripping up on statutory, but additional ones, if the local school boards appoint DAC membership, which you do. I just want to point out that there's two things. You can either, our school board, per our policy, appoints DAC membership. The other way is if they're, the school board appoints or approves of a process, another different process that DAC membership. But our policy says our school board appoints. So that's why I'm copying that language from statute. This then, if this is the way you do it, then this applies to you. So this is, this is how it's stated. So another thing to be mindful of, because we do things as the school board appoints DAC membership, ensure that at least one of the parents appointed to DAC is a parent of a student enrolled in a district charter school. So that doesn't mean an additional member. So I'm just going to go back to that seven-member slate that is the bare minimum. One of those parents would need to be a district charter school parent. Ensure that at least one person on the committee has a demonstrated knowledge of charter schools. Again, that's not another role. That could be anybody on the committee, either that charter school parent or the member of the business community, or the, a parent, or a teacher, whatever. So I just wanted to point out, those weren't additional roles, just like the last slide. This is about embedded in that seven-member slate at the bare minimum, this is what's encouraged to show up in that, in that seven-member slate. And then DAC leadership. So the members of the DAC shall select from among the parent representatives a member to serve as chair or co-chair of the committee. The board shall establish the length of term for which the committee or co-chair shall serve. So our board recognizes a chair and a co-chair. It's not statutorily required to have a chair and a co-chair, but a chair at minimum. But we do have a chair and a co-chair, and they are elected by members of the DAC for one year. That is in our policy. The chair and the vice chair count towards the minimum membership requirement of the three parents. So that's not additional roles.
Do they have to be parents?
Yes, they do.
Okay, they can't be like the teacher or the...
Yep, good, very good question.
However, the co-chair isn't limited, if I remember right.
The co-chair isn't, isn't limited, is that what you said?
Right. So the chair must be a parent, but the co-chair can be anyone?
I would have to, I would, I would have to look in our policy for that language, but because the state doesn't require a co-chair, I would think that we would be at liberty then. Unless our policy states that, I would need to go, I don't want to misquote our policy, but unless our policy states that the co-chair must be a parent, then that would be a role that we could define. And so just going back and summarizing here. At minimum, DAC is a seven-member committee comprised of five different roles. TSD policy indicates members are appointed for two-year terms. I will say that the state does not do that, but our policy does do two-year terms. And our policy, our practice, I want to say, is that we've done two-year terms, but voted people every single year. So there's an outgoing group and an incoming group, so they overlap. An updated list of persons interested in DAC membership is being submitted with this presentation along with the role that they wish to fill.
So maybe none are appointed for a second two-year term, following a two-year term?
Yeah, there is no term limit.
Okay.
From what I have read. We've had people serving on DAC for many years. I'm trying to, I lost my train of thought for just a second before that question was asked. Let me think of where I was, I was going to offer you a little bit more information. So you did receive a list of folks that were interested in DAC membership. And so what I'd like to do is just tell you who we have, who are current members who are for the 22-24 school year, so they were approved by you all last year. And of that, so let's just talk about that group for a second because I just want to tell you who's there and where they fill in on our minimum requirement. So the 22-24 current members, we have seven current members. However, on that, on that, we do not have a teacher. We do not have a community member involved with business or industry within the community. We do not have a student. So we have parents and an administrator. And that's on our current membership, people who are rolled over from last year's approved membership. On, we have like three groups that were submitted to you on the list of folks. We got folks who are current members who I just spoke about. We have people who have been members for either years or just last year or whatever, and they're seeking to be on DAC again. And so of those eight people wanting to renew their DAC membership, we have two parents, four teachers, and two community members. Now, I will add, it is probably on me if you would wish, but those community members, we, I've not sought out how they are connected with business or industry. So that is a piece of information that we don't have right this minute. But that was what they identified as a community member. But as I read into what the requirement was, that would be something that I could get more information on. And then there is the third group of people who have never been members of DAC who are interested in joining this year. And with that group, there are 11 interested people. Seven are parents. One is a student, we got a student there. And three are community members. So I present that list to you. I hope that you found it helpful to hear kind of what the makeup is and what you can do with it, and happy to hear any questions.
So before we roll in, I did look up, there was a question asked. DAC shall elect a parent representative to serve as chairperson and another parent representative to serve as vice chairperson for one year.
So they are parents?
Both have to be.
In our policy. Okay, thank you.
I have a couple of questions. Melissa, I'm assuming that people actually fill out applications for this position? And do they identify themselves on the application as a parent, a school or district employee, a community person, et cetera?
We have just recently done that because of your question in October. It was not an application process that is common in other school districts. It was just a, you know, if you're interested, give us your name. So I've just kind of historically have observed past practices. And so this time, we asked, well, in what role are you wishing to identify?
Okay. So on the application, legally, can you ask this, or have you asked? Since the recommendation is that there be someone who represents free and reduced lunch, English language learner, a person of color, disabled or gifted. So is there an opportunity on the application for the person to indicate if they check a particular box from this list of recommended members?
We don't have a question like that, and we certainly could. It would be voluntary if they'd like to answer something like that.
Okay.
It could probably be in, like, not saying specifically to them, but you could have a list maybe of, here's a list of people that we'd like to have involved in, so free and reduced store, gifted and talented, or whatever. And then just ask them, would you qualify for any of these? And not have to point blank say, does this, wouldn't that work?
And I think we could even say, like, represent perspective?
Yeah.
Without identification?
Yeah.
Because you have, you know, you have foster families that might be meeting several any time with experience, but they might not directly be fostering someone who meets that need right then, right?
My last question is actually for Gordon. Since the passage a year or two ago of the Free Lunch for All initiative by the state, do we even have students who are identified on the list as eligible for free and reduced lunch since everyone now is entitled to a free meal? Is that still?
It is very much still a process to encourage families to fill out the Free and Reduced Meal Application. They are under no obligation to do so, to receive free meals. But we encourage them to because there's other waivers within the district for athletic participation fees, class fees, those types of things. So we encourage families to do that, but there's no requirement.
So it doesn't actually influence free and reduced lunch anymore? It now is used to check on some of these other areas, is that correct?
That is correct, and there is some title, the title programs, the title grant programs that are associated with the free and reduced percentage as well. So Colorado is one of, I believe, seven states that now have some level of HSMA, Healthy School Meals for All, or Free Meals for All. So it is, it is a work in progress to marry those, that, those states that are in that situation with those that are not, and how they determine title funding.
So it would still be useful for this... So it would still be useful for this particular discussion to have listed, whether we just list the free and reduced lunch, English-language learner, et cetera. It sounds like it would still be useful to have free and reduced lunch in that list, even though it may not actually impact free and reduced lunch. It impacts these other areas that you just talked about. So it probably should continue to be on the list.
And I won't speak to the appropriateness of having it on the list. It sounds like that could be the case. I will say that we do have that information, but it's very closely held within our database of identifying those, those families that have filled out an application and are knowledgeable, very restricted information.
All right, thank you, thank you, Melissa.
So I sense that we need to do something more with our DAC policy before we proceed any further? Is that what you're feeling, that?
Okay.
I have some, I have some recommendations.
Okay.
I don't know, I don't know if we're ready for that, but. You and I talked about this, this is stuff that we talked about already, so I won't be surprising. It's just been before, it was last year, way back last year. So I think it, it might be good in that, like, begin with the streamlining. I think it would be really nice if we could streamline some of our committee membership practices, right? And so DAC isn't the only one. We've spent god knows how much time talking about it for the DAC. And I bet there's other committees doing the same thing, right? So I think it would be really helpful for us to, to think about that, like, that more macro level. And I would, I looked at, I looked at this pretty closely. If the 26 people recommended still lacks balance and, and doesn't quite get us where we need to be. So I'd love for us to think about how we can sort of marry the two practices that exist, at least the two that I know of. Where like some of our committees are people where we just say, hey, we would like to nominate Bob, versus the ones where people self-nominate and then we appoint through that process.
I sense this is going to need to be a through-the-year, through-this-year process, that we need to be able to start next year fresh with all of the adjustments? Is that perhaps the right way, Melissa? In the fact that we need, this is where we're already at semester times. We're starting a new semester. There's a group of people that have kind of worked with Brian Hurley as the chair and the, I don't even know, Jessica. So we work through the rest of this year, but not necessarily open up to a crowd of people to say, okay, you could be or you could not be, because we have a lot really kind of to go with. But that we work through this as the year progresses. Is that kind of the way you feel like it could be?
Let me tell you what I'm, what I'm hearing. I'm just kind of trying to summarize. I hear that perhaps a more thorough application would be helpful and give more information. Now, that's because our policy says you appoint the DAC. I could bring back an application for you to see, because that's your information that you want to know about DAC membership. That's one thing I hear. I also hear that our policy doesn't include everything that I mentioned that is in statute, that you'd like to take a look at, updating that.
Yeah.
So that's something that I can go back and bring, work on and bring back for this group to review. What I'm hearing now, which is also moving forward with who I have submitted, we have, we have seven current members who have been, were last year's who are serving their second term or are current members. And we are missing, we are missing a teacher, and we are missing a person involved in the business community, and we are missing a student in our current membership. And so I just, that's what I want to highlight in the, in the way that you might want to consider at least getting those basic blanks on the slate.
Yeah, actually, does this go somewhere? Do you submit DAC?
No.
List somewhere?
No.
No, okay, so I guess that's kind of where I was going, is, so you get the process here for us, coming up with our final, what it's going to look like when we start next year?
You could do that.
And that way, then we can...
Because we have members that are current right now.
Right, and then we can prepare all of these people who are thinking that they're on DAC. In reality, they're observers or attendees of DAC, but they are not, are not members of DAC.
It can be.
I don't want to do it that way.
I don't, I don't.
I don't want to do it that way.
That's fine, I'm just throwing out an idea.
Yeah, so, so the, so long-term, I would like for us to think about that. But I think that what, what would be helpful is if we also look at, like, can we appoint people in the places where we have a gap, right? Like we do in the other practices. So, you know, say that we still didn't have a student at the end of this. You know, it'd be really helpful if we could add that into our, into our practices. It's in the policy already, but our practice hasn't been to seek out and make sure that there's a student, right? And so I think, I would like to see us practice that. And, and I'd like for us, as part of that practice, to also make sure that we have parity in who we're, in who we're nominating to fill in for any gaps that exist or imbalance that exists after the people nominate themselves. So like taking the group at face value, we are actually closer to parity if we accept everybody who's self-nominated.
For this year.
Yes, however, we still are not at parity. And we are lacking student populations. I'd like to not wait to do that. I'd love, even if it's separate, I'd love for us to also add people to fill the needs that we're missing. Because right now, we're not representing our students, our populations, and we're, we're missing out voices with the populations that aren't there.
Nancy?
I, I really like, I would really like to chime in. One, and all the time I have observed the school board and been on the school board, I have never seen such an interest in who's on DAC. The legislative intent of DAC is it is to be parent-led, parent-run. It is not a district-led committee.
Well, actually, by statute, we're supposed to appoint.
May I finish on?
Nancy?
So I think it's important to understand that when I first took the DAC as the board liaison, there had been no effort by the board to, because it also says clearly that we're supposed to make an effort to bring people into DAC. And I have been doing that. I do not try to qualify the parents. Just if you're interested, come check out the meeting. If you want to join, that's great. Our current policy is we elect, we appoint, approve a group in staggered terms. I think it's really disingenuous to say that we're going to change that midstream. And I also don't believe that if we approve this newest group, that the board then decides that we're going to appoint other people in between. I just find it really interesting that there's such a fascination with this group now, since I have served on it for two years and grown the membership, which I think is a great thing. So I think if we're going to do this, we should do it in a more measured way that follows the process until we have a new process, and then we switch. Don't switch midstream.
Isn't that what I said, though, is that we use this year to determine the process, and we start fresh with it in the fall?
It sounds like the current group of new people who would like to be appointed to serve are going to not be.
No, I said anybody that's on here, if this is what they want to do, would still be a part of our DAC for this year.
Including the new people, including the new people who've never served.
If they fit into what our needs are, I assume, like, there's a student on here.
And I think it's important that we look at the membership of DAC as a whole, not staggered by each election group.
What do you mean by not staggered?
It seems like the group as a whole, the whole membership, if you looked at the whole membership, we do have teacher, we do have it. But it sounds like we're looking, trying to look at it. This group is 2022 to 24, and then this group. That's kind of how it was broken out here. So I think we want to make sure we look at the membership as a whole, not by the period that they're going to be elected in.
Melissa, what are you hearing?
I'm sorry. That's all right. I, the one area I am confused about is I, I don't know if I'm hearing that you would be interested in having everybody who has been submitted serve as voting members and then work on changing the policy and the application process? Or you would like to hold on to who are current members, which is a smaller group of people, and fill the holes that we have, which is a student and a community member, business member, and a teacher? And work on policy and an application process for next year and move forward with a, a smaller group of people? So I'm just trying to get a sense for what the wishes are.
That's kind of what I'm hoping the goals are that we're going to do, but I'm unsure about the feeling of everybody as to whether we include all of, or all or part, or the ones that are on the front that are already in a two-year cycle?
I, I think we should approve all of these people.
So both sides?
Whoever people there are. They've expressed interest. They presumably have come to the meetings. Like, yes, it may not be 100% perfect representation of every possible demographic within the district. I think the odds of us finding that are very small. These are people who are volunteering their time. We should respect that. We should give them what they have signed up to do. And then I agree, if we can make, you know, some modifications to the process going forward, fine. But I think, I think there's no reason to not approve this group of people we have for us right now.
Okay, we can't approve tonight anyway, so it'll come back to us at our next meeting.
Yeah.
Alexandra, could I ask you to clarify? Are you saying, and I'm not counting the people who are kind of grandfathered in at this point, are you saying that you think we should approve all the ones who are asking for renewal and?
We should approve from Brian Hurley to Lucius whoever, and everyone in between. To Lucius Carlson and everyone in between.
And that would be for this semester?
Yes.
Yeah.
Is Lucius Carlson in the brand-new people list? I don't have mine.
He's the last person on the list.
I see, okay. I just wanted to clarify what you were...
So we're going to, when we, when we vote in January, if we would have voted on this in October, we would be, we're voting for the two-year term for the 23-25 of everyone who submitted interest. That, that's what I've been trying to clarify. And that's what I think we should do, because that's what the policy is. When they said, hey, I'm interested in serving, and this committee struggles to find people, and so why would we make it harder for them to be part of it? I agree.
Other thoughts? Amy, any ideas, your thoughts?
No. Barb, can I share with you something that I noted when I went through the list? There are five schools in the district that have two representatives. I don't know whether, and I didn't write down whether they're parent representatives or teachers. There's one school that if we were to accept everyone from, who's currently on, who wants to renew and would be new, there's one school that would have three. Only one, and as I said, then five who would have two. I guess I'm a little concerned that any school, that one school would have a larger representation than any of the other schools. That, that's what I noted.
And it's, I guess what it is, is also it's voting. And right now, that's setting our committee is really large. In reality, next year, we could go down to seven.
You could.
Could, depending upon what we, what is determined as the policy for, for DAC.
I think that if you choose to consider everyone on the list, it may be helpful, and I'm happy to facilitate a communication, that we are looking to revise our policies.
Yes.
And this is for this school year.
This school year, yes.
Like, you do a reapplication process and your selection process in the fall, which is typical of school districts.
So this really is just for 23-24? When we approve in, at the end of, when we, at our next meeting? It would be just for the school year?
Because that's not a compliance policy.
The policy is two years.
It is, okay.
So you would be approving them under a current policy, which would be a two-year term. Now, the...
But we're putting then all these people on for two more years?
When you approve them, they will be started in this year.
According to our policy right now.
Yeah.
If we don't put this group on, we don't have parity.
Okay.
We're still not at parity, but we're a lot closer with this group than without it.
All right.
Yeah.
Okay, that's why this is a working session.
Yeah, yeah, because we have to...
We have to leave these. And I'm sorry for you guys having to wait while we try to figure out what's good for us.
Yeah, I mean, I think we do have to do what's in the policy, but I think this has highlighted the, the fact that we do it so many different ways, right? And that is...
Okay.
So just for clarification, so we'll be, what I'm hearing is that we will bring this list back, how, 26 names, whatever, at our next board meeting on January 17th. We're not bringing anything else back, unless, I mean, we're just going to bring this list back, is that correct?
That's correct. And, and anybody on here would then be, if under our current policy, approved, approved for two more years, anybody who's new or renewing. So then going into any policy revision or a new application process, you would have a year of a group that has been grandfathered in that, that would be, have been voted on?
So not all of these will be there next year? It's that they will have been grandfathered in, some of them, or for the following year even?
If you vote on this list, the top group that is our current members would be expiring at the end of this year.
End of this year, okay.
But the renewal, the second group and the group on the back of...
Okay, that's, that makes sense to me.
That would then be your two-year group.
Yeah, so it's not all of these will be back?
So you're going to be voting on groups two and three?
Yeah, thank you.
That's what we're...
Because one expires in October, right?
That's right, yeah, at the end of this year.
All right, is that enough? I know that took a lot of time, but I felt like it caused a lot of concern at one point, so we needed to address it.
But I will bring back an application and a policy revision sometime next semester as you move into next year.
Okay, thank you, you guys, I appreciate it. All right. Point 14, I don't know, I think it's still you, Melissa.
I do.
I'm sorry.
Still warm in the seat. So it's the Loveland Classical Renewal Extension.
Yes. At some point, we're going to take a bathroom break.
So, thank you. This is hopefully very quick. So as you know, right now, we are, have the Loveland Classical Charter renewal underway. By state statute, those need to be, the actual renewal application needs to be submitted by December 1st, and we are in receipt of that. And Loveland Classical has done a very thorough job of giving us everything that we need, and we're processing that. State statute also says that by February 1st, there will be a decision made or a recommendation made. That's a really quick turnaround time when you consider that there's a winter break in between those, those dates. So they give the option that if both parties mutually agree, that we can extend that timeline. So in our stewardship of resources, just increasing alignment of resources to reflect the needs that we have right now, and providing transparency in the use of our resources. So Dr. Ian Stout, the executive director of Loveland Classical, and I have worked on an agreement with his board. You have that in your materials tonight. But we would meet regularly. His board has approved an extension of us getting back to them about their charter renewal. I'm bringing it to you all. We have until the board meeting in April to get back to them about their charter renewal. to get back to them about their charter renewal. I anticipate bringing you the recommendation for their charter renewal in next month's study session. We're well ahead of schedule, but just perfunctory needed to be able to give you this extension agreement.
Okay. Questions? Thank you. Appreciate it, Melissa. I'm sorry. All right. Our next item, do you need a break right now, or do you want to go a couple more items? No comment? Okay. 4.15 is school utilization update. Oh, somebody new.
Maybe this is exciting as well. All right, good evening, Board of Education. Dr. Schaefer, Toprakony Chief Operations Officer. Tonight, as presented every year in January by board policy, we're going to talk about school utilization. So first, strike 2025, the stewardship of resources. Looking at our facilities to see how they're being utilized for operational function, and then meeting the current and future needs of the district. By board policy, just a quick review. Board policy FCA requires staff to go through the utilization compared year by year, report to the board on the first meeting in January if there is any recommendation of school closure. So that's a summary of 10 pages of board policy. Need to 20 seconds. But that's what this presentation is for. So moving on to the school utilization, you'll see we've put together the utilization for all schools in the district. We've done a little bit different this year. We've highlighted in two different colors, if you can kind of see the shading. We have to highlight everything that is under service level U, which is 75% utilization. So anything below that, we've highlighted as board policy states as underutilized. You'll see there is a significant amount of schools that fall underneath that 75%. What we did with Master Plan Committee, we looked at, Ian's staff, we looked at all these schools, and it really came down to about seven, eight schools, you know, that are truly under capacity. Because when you look at, say, Centennial, for example, or Parity Ridge or Cottonwood, those, even though they're under capacity, there is future growth and development that we've looked at to define that even though now they're sitting underneath, we don't really need to identify those because there's other external influences going to help the growth there. The schools we did look at were, you know, the Lincoln, Nemacqua, Sarah Melner, Winona, Wall Clark, just a few. We kind of dove in a little deeper there to understand where they were at. Some of those, there's a part of the board policy that says if you initiate a school closure, you've got to watch the ripple effect. So if you close one, it can have ripple effect impact to the other schools. So that's what we're watching on these here. And then also, you know, as we talked with the Master Plan Committee, the district has gone through four school closures in the last, well, small second time, four or five years.
Since I've been on the board.
Since you've been on the board, yeah, we've had four school closures. And we also, let's let the numbers enrollment kind of settle, the community kind of see where we're at, track it continually by board policy, but not make any actions at this point. So we go into the next slide. That's what this says, is that there was no recommendation for, really the next steps in board policy FCA-R to recommend any school closure. So that is the school utilization report as outlined in policy. Are there any questions?
Questions? Nancy?
I just.
A little bit louder, Nancy.
Oh, sorry.
Sorry, but I, there's a lot of noise.
So on the Winona, that one has long been, even before I was on the board, I've known that on this utilization report, it's been low. And that's a school I'm partial to. That's where my kids went. At the same time, I just keep seeing that it never really, and I look around at that area, and I just, you know, it's like, what would help get it back up? And I don't see that. And I get the worry about the ripple, but.
Actually, Winona sits in probably the one school that sits in the unique situation out of all the underutilized schools. Because when you look at the resident students that actually live in the bounded area of Winona, there's nearly 600 students. You know, so those 600 students aren't going to Winona. There, you know, only a portion thereof are going, but the rest of the students are going elsewhere. So.
Where?
Well, there's, you know, there's New Vision right there. They're opting out to other schools. Between New Vision, right here, all throughout the district. I mean, there's some opt-out. So it's interesting because if that changes, you know, we don't have that school there, there's actually a major impact on other schools because now we have a small bounded school area that has a lot of students in it. So it's ebb and flowed. You know, when you look at the history, it's been overcapacity. It's now under. You know, but if it shifts and that shifts, that's really the challenge is we need place for those resident students to go. If they say, okay, we're all going back.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Good thing is there's enough kids there that, yeah, it's needed.
All right. Anybody else have questions about it?
It's also in the part that's got the growth for the east side of town too. Like technically, right? It's, you know, yeah.
Yeah, when you look 10 years plus, 15 years down the road, south side of Winona, you know, could take like the Campion area and all that back up into it as well. So it sits in the area where there could be more growth as well.
I will note for Winona, somewhere to like what we did at Wall Clark Middle School, staff is currently exploring programmatic considerations for that school as well.
Considering what?
Programmatic considerations. Similar to Truskett would be another example where we might be able to move, let's say, newcomers program there. So Winona, there, you know, certainly anything that we'll consider we'll bring forward to the board. We're not prepared to share publicly yet, but what I will share is that we're actively considering maybe moving a program into Winona, which will help us start.
All right. Anybody else on? Okay. Best Grants.
Yes. Yeah, moving on to discussion about best grants, so similar to several previous years, we've come to the board about just the process to submit for a best grant. So this is just the discussion about the approval for the best grant that we'll talk about again in January 17. So again, a strike 2025 to make sure that all facilities are welcoming, safe, and meet the needs. As you see there, having roofs maintained in good conditions are imperative to a healthy environment. Just a quick best grant overview. So it's a competitive process through the Colorado Department of Education. The funding's through the state land board, Colorado Lottery, and the marijuana excise tax. Last year, and we will have updated figures for the January 17th board meeting last year, our match was 67%, and then BEST gave us 33%. So they're finalized those numbers now as we're approaching the application process, but it should be pretty close to that percentage. Yeah, just to note, the priorities of best grant, health, safety, and technology are the ones that have been awarded. Nothing below number one has been awarded. So when you look at overcrowded, Care Tech, and all others, they've only been able to award the number one priority. And I'll note on technology, it's not computer devices. It's more, it's been more Eastern Plains like install of true internet services. Just a brief history of what we have done. So in 2020, 21 and 23, you can see just the bottom right, we have captured over $13 million worth of best grants. So we've leveraged the costs, the bond dollars we've had into another $13 million worth of work. We can clap for that.
Yeah.
That's awesome. No, thank you. Yeah, it's, yeah, it's good for the district and it's provided a lot of additional work. A best grant timeline. So similar to the years, we handed in some scope identification. We did an intent to apply to CDE. So we just have to intend to apply. Obviously, tonight, we're just reviewing the budget and scope, which we'll do in a second. On the January 17th, we'll review the kind of best contract to say, okay, the board's okay with proceeding with the best contract. And then staff will submit the final grant to CDE right around February 5th, if not a few days sooner. Just the scope and budget review. So roofing projects is all we're going for this year. So if the board recalls, we took some of the bond contingency, put it towards deferred maintenance. Roofing projects are the highest need right now. So those are what we're going to look at going for the best grant for. You will see on the next page, the total, so we're looking at $1.3 million worth of TSD funds, which would be about a $660,000 best grant contribution, so a total of $2 million worth of roofing. The majority of that would be Loveland High School, but there are some significant issues at Cottonwood Plains and Ivy Stockwell that we hope to capture as well. That is, that's section of the presentation. Are there any questions?
Any questions for Todd on best grants?
No?
I don't have a question, but my kids the other day were talking about teachers running around Loveland High School with garbage cans when it rains and then like all lined up in the hallways to catch the water. So it's definitely a need.
I will say there's one section, you know, we've been actually, we've put over $2 million into that roofing in the last three years. Because of the size of the building, there is one section that's still that this is. I'm hoping it's not as bad as what, you know, as the fear is, but that is the hope to correct that, yes.
So if we don't get the best grant, what? Are we just going to do the Loveland High roof? Or what's the?
Yes, we'll go by highest priority. So we'll stick towards the Loveland High. And then Cottonwood is the other one that's. Ivy, we can, you know, if, a further discussion, as we're talking about, you know, future needs, that can maybe hold off for a few years. But those are the two higher needs we'd go to.
And buy more wastebaskets, right, Todd?
Yeah, I mean, we have a lot of people. Let's hope not.
Thank you. The next item is an update, I think. You know, what is it? Something, yeah, project budget and associated contract for our youth shelter.
Yeah, so just for discussions, similar to the process we've done in previous with contracting, bond work, and construction projects, this is just for the board to approve the project budget and associated contracts. So this project budget aligns with the grant amount that we awarded through Division of Housing. So the $3.75 million, this is saying that the board approved spending up to that amount. If we were to go over, we'll come back to the board and say we went over, and here's how we're, the staff recommendation to remedy it is. So tonight is just a, really just a memo that we're asking for approval to say we're going to enter contract negotiations with a couple firms mentioned, and then for, just to spend up to the broad, the budget amount of that 3.7, which is the amount that the board previously reviewed and approved in the contract with Division of Housing.
Questions? Will approve this on the next page?
Yeah, we'll give this forward on 17th.
Yeah, okay. Thank you, Todd. Yeah, I'm going to say that we have just a few-minute break before Gordon starts.
Okay. Hopefully, very, very quickly, just a review of the budget process that we go through each year. So the adopted budget takes place. Statute says that that should be adopted before the end of the previous fiscal year. So our timeframe is June typically to have that presented to the board. That work is already started and is underway for 24-25. We're talking about 23-24 for this process. So adopted budget in June, we have the opportunity by statute to file an amended budget or adopt an amended budget. There's no filing that needs to take place, but adopt an amended budget by January 31st of each year. And then we have the ability, the district does, by June of the, of the coming June to make any other supplemental adjustments. So adopted budget, amended budget, supplemental budget is the process. So this is the annual exercise that we go through at this time of the year. There's typically three primary items that are analyzed and adjusted for the estimates when the original budget was prepared. Those are, first, the beginning fund balances that we have. So those are estimates at the time the budget is adopted. Now we've completed the audit for the 22-23 years, so we know what those actual fund balances are. That's the first item we'll talk about. Funded pupil count is another item with the October count that takes place. We make an estimate of what we think the funded pupil count is going to be, which is a large part of the School Finance Act funding. But once the October count is done and finalized, typically in late November, early December, we make adjustments for that, either increases, decreases, or leaving it the same. And then the third item is typically the per pupil revenue. So the state will have more information about assessed valuation, state share versus local share, a variety of different things. They'll adjust the per pupil revenue sometimes. Sometimes it's very minimal. We'll see what that is as we look at this, the proposed amendments on this version. The other item that we have now is, on this particular presentation, is the change in the mill levy override dollars with the changes, the special session that we've talked about earlier, where the legislature adjusted or made accommodations for assessed valuations. That changes a variety of different things, but mill levy overrides is the one that we'll talk about here. The overarching comment that I'll make on all these is, typically, these are fairly solid numbers at this time of the year. I will say these are estimates, again, at this point. There's, it's stronger than an estimate, but not a final number in a variety of these things. Again, because of the timing with the special session and getting figures out. In fact, CDE typically has this posted on their website, and they don't have that, the final numbers posted. They sent a very preliminary version just directly to districts, but no final numbers. But I think these hopefully will be fairly close. So moving forward with the, that slide is the beginning fund balances. So you'll see the pattern in all these. I've shown figures from the adopted budget, the proposed amendment, and then what the change is in each one of these areas. So just a couple of general comments or quick comments on this. When you look at the bottom right, you see $11.9 or $12 million less in fund balance than what was anticipated or estimated with the original budget. That's primarily from two or three items. First is the building fund, which is on Row 9. You see that difference being $5.8 million. That's actually a good thing, that we have less fund balance than what we'd anticipated. It means projects have been wrapped up. Build, paid, fund balance goes down. So that's actually a positive. The other two go together on Row 3, federal grants, and Row 6, state and local grants. Those are really timing-related. So some grants, a lot of grants that we have, especially at the federal level, are reimbursement grants. So we incur costs and then request reimbursements. So we incur costs and then request reimbursements. A lot of times those cross over the fiscal year of June 30th. So if we've incurred cost, we've used fund balance, but we haven't received the, the payment for the receivable that we have. Those numbers, those dollars come to the district, it just crosses the fiscal year. That's the other item. And then the general fund on line 1 is primarily the payment of the, because of the outperformance in prior year, the payment of those dollars and what actually took place, that's what's related with that spin down of the fund balance that we see there. So these are the true final in the green column, that amended budget January 2024, are the final audited numbers from '22, '23 ending balance, fund balance, which becomes beginning fund balance for the '23, '24 year. Next page, we talk about a few of the School Finance Act items. First section is per pupil revenue. This is the rate that is assigned to each school district through the elaborate formula that the School Finance Act calls for. You can see the budgeted number, the adopted budget was, I'm going to refer to line 1, which is the PPR after the budget stabilization factor, so this is after making that deduction. So we anticipated and CDE said, we expect your number to be $10,034.16. The actual number, or not actual, updated number or estimated number as of January 2024 is $10,085.56, so a $51.40 increase per student. And you wouldn't think that's a big number. That's, when you apply that to 12,000 to 14,000 students, it becomes a somewhat material number. The $51.40 is larger than what we typically see in the adjustments that, that take place. So that's a positive for the district. Second block of numbers is the funded pupil count. That's the, based on the October count, number of students, then there's multiple calculations that go into that because some students are counted as halftime if they are, go to school halftime and work halftime, various different things that determine the funded pupil count that we have. A positive there that you can see on Row 7, and this, it's broken out to show TSD only than each one of our two charter schools. So on Row 7, we anticipated on the adopted budget 14,713.2 students. Our actual numbers came in at 14,778.3, so a 65.1 FTE standpoint or, or calculation. And you can see that of that, 39.2 of those students is an increase over budget, over the adopted budget, and the district will receive, if those numbers hold, $10,085.56 for each one of those 39 students. So that's a positive as well. I would say generally speaking, we see a decrease from budget to our certified or final funded pupil count, but we like to see that be as close as possible, which I'd rather miss, be conservative on the original budget and then have a little bit of benefit here. And you can see in then the third block of numbers, what that means in real dollars. So to TSD only on Row 8 in the far right column, $1,050,000, which is the additional 39.2 funded pupils, as well as that additional $51.40 for all of the other pupils that we The third item is related to MLO revenues. So as a reminder, the district has three voter approved MLOs. 2006, I'm sorry, 1999 is the first one at 7.5 million, 2006 at 6.54 million. Those numbers are not expected to change. There's revenue sharing agreements that were adopted prior to current legislation that's in place. The district about nine years ago, eight or nine years ago, was proactive in saying we want to, we recognize the, the taxpayers of the district as a whole, charter schools are part of that, and we came to a revenue sharing agreement with, with those schools. So those dollars don't change. The 2018 MLO is the one that is more on a pro-rata basis for, based on number of students. So you can see what, that one's largely determined by what our assessed valuation is. With the assessed valuation, as it's calculated now versus what was assumed on the original budget, you can see a decrease there. This is that special session bill, SB 23B-001, that gave the $50,000 reduction on home values and lowered the assessment rate from 6.796 to 6.7% for an assessment rate. Those things drove down the assessed valuation below what was assumed on the budget. So we see revenue loss then associated with those, which you can see in the last section there, rows 13 through 16. So those are the, the proposed amended budget adjustments. That will be brought forth to the Board of Education at the meeting of the 17th, pending any updated information that could come from CDE as they get more information as all counties across the state have certified their, their assessed valuations to all of those districts. Those are the only adjustments that are contemplated at this point. Again, we have the ability, the board has the ability to make adjustments in us through a supplemental process after this, to make sure that we have a budget that is in line with reality at that particular time. Questions I may address?
Questions?
Do you want to start or with someone else?
Are there questions over here?
I have a question.
Alexandra.
So this is just sort of a curiosity, not directly related, but you may have told us this at some point in time, but when, when do we actually get the money from the state, like the PPR money, since it sounds like it's like sort of constantly fluctuating?
Very good question. So the legislature in their session, so in January of 2023, when they finally, finally finalize the school finance bill was April, which is getting late in our budget season. Us finance types in, in public education would, would much rather have the legislature adopt that school finance bill early because we have more time to run that through. Instead, it involves looking at three or four different scenarios. So that's what the legislature adopted in April of last year that was used for the, the budget. The CDE sends us, to answer your question, on a monthly basis. They take what are expected total program funding, they call it the School Finance Act, program funding are kind of synonymous. They divide that by 12 and send us monthly allotments of that. Then as they get updated information with October count numbers when they're finalized in November or December, assessed valuations, which are typically in November and December, they update those numbers and we get a new School Finance Act total divided by, they basically take that new finance number minus what we've already received for July through December typically, divide by six, the remaining amount divided by six then tells us what our allocation will be for the coming months.
Okay, okay, okay.
Nancy?
Um, when we go to, when you present this to us at the next meeting, does this mean that since you only went through the revenue, that there are no changes to the expenditures?
No anticipated changes that would be material. We track those somewhat with the financial report that comes out monthly that's posted for the board's consideration. We're looking at those, if there's, if there's a material adjustment that would need to be made, we would bring that forward as either the, from an amended budget standpoint or from the, the supplemental process.
And what's the threshold for it to be material?
Typically, and this is, there's no, there's no, no statutory requirement or threshold. My general guideline is 250,000. If there's an expense item that's going to be less than budget or more than budget by 250,000, I try to bring those to the board's attention. Typically, we're able to absorb, so you know how budgets work. Sometimes you're better than budget, sometimes you're worse than budget, and you get to the bottom line at the end of the year, and a lot of those things even themselves out. There's nothing that's risen to that level as of this point that I would bring forward at this time.
Okay, thanks.
Any others?
Thank you, board. Yeah.
Madam President, School Board, Dr. Schaefer, Bill Sievers, Chief Human Resources Officer. I'm here to present on superintendent evaluation. I had given you information about the workbook and all the different forms involved with it. So STRIVE 2025, next slide please. Develop staff and help job classifications through enhanced opportunities. This presentation will connect to focus area number three, human talent, as we discuss the process for the 2324 superintendent evaluation workbook. So there's policies, the superintendent evaluation is one of the fundamentals, responsibilities of the school board, you can kind of read through that. So getting feedback to the superintendent how things are going as far as the conversation you had at the beginning about goals. So this just ties into the beginning process to the end process. Next slide. All right, so the evaluation, there's eight, eight parts, so there's TSD STRIVE 2025 Strategic Plan, so there's four areas for evaluation of the superintendent. The student achievement, inclusive and supportive culture, human talent, and stewardship of resources. And then five through eight is shared vision and advances district excellence, advocate for public education, lead through transparency, strong relationship with the board. So those are the eight areas that the evaluation covers. So there's four different forms, I won't go through all the forms, but that gives you an idea of, you know, what Form 1 is about, Form 2, Form 3, and Form 4. So the evaluation timeline is, the reason why I'm going over this is there is, in the gray, it's part of the superintendent's contract for compliance. So by November 20th, goals and objective conference, that's already taking place today at January 3rd, so discuss superintendent evaluation instrument, January 17th, which is the next board, board meeting, executive session for mid-year review. So that would be in compliance with January 29th is the mid-year review conference needs to take place on or before the 29th. So having that meeting next, next board meeting, January 17th keeps in compliance. And then down the road, May 1st, review superintendent evaluation process, the individual evaluation, so I'll come back to talk about the individual itself and, and what the homework assignment is around that. And then you would submit that individual evaluation to myself by May 13th, and I would compile all that information and get it ready for the board's executive session for year end evaluation of the superintendent.
So can I, I'm going to extend before you ask any questions. So in my board update to you tomorrow, I will provide to you in written form an update on my goals. So I'll remind you what my four goals were, and then I will provide a number of highlights under each goal area. If the board will recall, and this is really for Denise, we focused only on the first four areas. We developed goals in, for the first four areas specific to anchor to those four things, and we, in terms of relationship with Board of Education, 5, 6, 7, 8, there's still goals, but you asked me just to focus on the first four, knowing that we had a board election and new people coming on board. Also, as a reminder, when we meet an executive session on January 17th and you provide me with feedback, that's what you'll be asked to do, is provide me with feedback and it's verbal. So there's nothing written that you provide, there's no checklist or forms or, or ratings per se. You know, Barb facilitates the conversation, I take lots of notes, but basically it's, it's the glows and the gross, you know, what are the things hopefully that I'm making good progress on, and then what are some areas that you would like me to continue to focus on or work on. So while I'll try to illuminate the growth or achievements I've made in certain areas, I'll also share with you work in progress as well in those four areas. The other thing I've just tasked, asked my cabinet to do, we had a, a great cabinet meeting today. The, on our website, we have STRIVE 2025, and you've asked for a dashboard with data, and so we're working on that. And the other thing I've tasked my group to do is show progress towards the goals. So kind of sort of, are we, I'll just give this as an example, it won't look like this, but like are we 80% of the way there? You know, in STRIVE 2025, we have an end date of 2025, so how are we doing on progress? And we'll pictorially represent that, you know, anchoring that to data and showing why. So we're working on that right now, will be done by the end of this month, January, hopefully before. Not to convolute with the goal discussion, but a lot of, you know, a lot of you have asked for data and metrics and just specific growth, as well as showing how I'm making progress, how the district is making progress in those areas. And so that by January 30th, 31st, that will be complete as well.
Okay, what else do we need to know? What questions do you have still about what we need? So on the 17th, we'll have exec session.
So there will be an executive?
Mm-hmm. Four o'clock, five o'clock?
We don't, we do this, we don't have to fill that all?
No, no.
No, just the laws and?
Yes, so saying end of the year is the feedback specifically to me, that I would kind of type up the document and then send it back as far as a summary. But, but like Dr. Schaefer was saying, like the conversation is just a conversation of it's like a mid-year checking to see how goals are doing, any supports that superintendent may need, or vision for the district. So it's similar to the evaluations that we do for all three employee groups, classified license, and APT. There's always a beginning conference and then a mid-year conference to see how things are going, and then the end of year evaluation.
Okay. We'll see you on the 17th.
Thank you.
All right. The next one is just really one I just need to have somebody agree to read unless we have Mark or somebody else read it. It's the proclamation declaring January is National School Board Recognition Month. Yeah, so Mark, you'll read it for us?
Oh, I would love to.
Okay, please. I don't think there's anything we need to discuss right now, it's just, just being aware that this is our month.
Yay.
I'm glad that we talked about it earlier. We can enjoy most of the month.
Yes, so you can enjoy it totally. That's right. All right, 4.21, 4.21 is standard action consent items, and it's just the typical ones we see where we see the, yes, personnel, and there'll be, if there's gifts or if there's $50,000 or whatever, it's been above, you know, spending above that that we have to approve. All right, the next piece is Stu.
Okay. Well, the first Legislative Relations Committee meeting isn't until a week from Friday, so I don't have a, a report similar to the ones that I usually give you. But what I did ask Laurie to send out was the legislative platform for 2023 that Adams 12 Five Star Schools puts out. And the reason I did this, well, first of all, I went to a CASP session devoted to how school boards can be a little bit more involved in the legislative process. And as I looked at this, as I communicated with somebody in the, in one of the offices at Adams 12, I decided that this was important enough to bring it to you. Just, I'll read you just a couple of sentences that accompany it on the website. The Adams 12 Board reviews its policy legislative platform annually in November and December. This is the basis for the legislative platform brochure. The board meets with state and federal legislators and State Board of Education members annually in December to learn about their plans for the next legislative session, to share the district's priorities and to update them regarding the ongoing work in Adams 12. It also provides guidance to district staff and their legislative consultant, and I think their legislative consultant is probably their lobbyist, on determining the district's position on pending legislation. So I'm bringing this to you as a sample. What we would create certainly doesn't have to be this expansive. Undoubtedly, this has evolved and have been added onto by that district for the period of time that they've done it. To find out if you're interested in our creating something like this, this is something that staff would probably create with our input. The part that I found really interesting and important and something that we don't do is that this platform enables them, as I said, to meet with state and federal legislators to discuss things that are important within the district that are directly related to legislation. Since I've been on the board, and particularly since I've been part of the Legislative Relations Committee, my assessment is we don't do what a lot of districts do. We kind of hear what everybody else is doing, and I report to you and District We kind of hear what everybody else is doing, and I report to you, and district staff is aware of some of what I report, they don't know some of what I, I report, but it seems like we're the receivers and not really involved in, in doing creation. So we don't have to make a decision tonight. My personal position as a board member is I would like us to explore doing this, because I think it would give us an opportunity, once it's finished, to meet with our state senator, with the various representatives that represent parts of, of the Thompson School District, and to be able to say, here's what's important to us, here's what we would like you to fight for in the legislature. And so that's, that's my CASB report tonight.
Okay. Do you want some feedback, or you just want us to think about?
If you can give me feedback now, that would be great.
I would, I would just say that, I know that Representative Weinberg is always willing to meet, and I know that he's reached out to Dr. Schaefer and has offered to come talk with us anytime that we would like. So I mean, it's, we have Senator Marchman and Representative Weinberg, and I know that they would both, they might even be willing to do a joint. I think they've done a joint town hall together before.
The difference is that we would actually have a platform, priorities, et cetera, to discuss with them as opposed to just a conversation. I think that that's the difference between what Adams Twelve is doing and what they're providing, whatever it is they're providing our district.
Okay. Any other thoughts? I think we need to kind of ponder this.
Yeah.
As you do your report each month, let's really kind of, you know, get our study sessions, maybe that'll be a time when we can think a little bit more about what would fit.
Yeah.
And where we, where we see ourselves as a board.
And I would encourage you, when I went to the session at CASB, which is where the idea came from, I actually picked, picked up a hard copy. So when you look at what you received online, there's a section on legislative principles, legislative positions that are important to that particular district. And there's a lot of other information that's district-specific that I think members of our communities, our constituents, would probably be interested in as well.
Do they distribute it to somebody?
They, like, they have it in their lobbies and.
Yeah, but I mean, they aren't mailing it like what we do somewhere.
I don't know.
Okay.
I don't know that.
Okay. I just don't want to blur the lines.
Blur the lines?
Well, we say that, just from a, a school board point of view, that we are not political so much, and I guess I don't want to bring, yeah.
After looking at this carefully, I would say this is not political. This is very factual.
Yeah.
In terms of.
Specific to their district.
Specific to their district. But I think it provides us with a fine example.
Oh, yeah.
And it's, as I said, it's probably evolved over time, so.
Maybe it's part of the legislative person.
Legislative person's bringing you the idea.
Well, I reacted to it for that reason, too, because, you know, I'm, we're in these meetings.
With federal relations, yeah.
Yeah, and I haven't, I hadn't seen it in depth, and I, I liked it for the fact that it, it clearly was something that was, like, they worked collaboratively on it, right? And it is board position, not district position, which is something that we've talked about several other ways, several other times. And so the idea that we'd have a conversation about, like, where do we want to put our effort into what we're going to add, advocate for? Because I do think that we're in, we, we are in conversations when, I was at a Boys and Girls Club event with, with Weinberg and Marchman, and that was exactly the kind of time when we're, like, talking about these kinds of things, right? So it's like helping to have us have, like, a baseline.
Yeah.
And, and talk about these things in a way that we, that is a little different than how we do it. But, but as I read through, like, what they've articulated, I was like, oh, I mean, it's kind of common sense stuff, right? It's, it's a lot of stuff that's related to probably our next conversation of things that the average person may not know about how things are funded, what we're spending money on, why, why we have the challenges we have, you know? And then people come to us and they say, well, why isn't the marijuana money paying for these schools, right? Like, it's filling in some of those, informing some of those gaps, as well as having us be the person to be the conduit back when people go, well, I would expect that that is happening. Why, you know, somebody should tell them.
Yeah.
If they're asking us to tell them, well, then this would help us to say, here, yes, we, we believe this is how we want to talk about it.
Okay.
Stu, how often do they put that?
Once a year.
Once a year.
Yeah. And they, they do it at the end of each calendar year, which probably makes sense, and they, they meet occasionally during the, during the year. But I thought maybe the first study session of our new year would be a time to introduce this and see where we go from here. There's more information, too, other than just legislative. There's student information, demographic information, there's stuff on the B S factor. So I think it could, a document like this could also be really useful within the community to tell our story. It's attractive, it's four pages, has big print, I didn't need my glasses on to read it. So I, I think it definitely has a place, well, it definitely has a place in this district and some other districts that have a legislative platform. The question is, what do we do with it? What I haven't had a chance to do would be to ask Dr. Schaefer and Cabinet, would this be useful to you in different aspects of your job? And I don't know how to ask the question any, any better than that.
Yeah, what I'll, what I'll share with the board, so in terms of legislative advocacy, in two weeks, January seventeenth, actually the same day as our board meeting, Melissa Schneider and I are going down to the Capitol. So that is a case legislative, it's called Case Day at the Capitol. So it's part of the Denver Area Superintendent Group, which is now, we're renaming the Front Range Superintendent something, we just changed the name. But we have, it's, it's a yearly legislative advocacy opportunity where superintendents and members of case, the Colorado Association of School Executives, go to the Capitol, and we meet with legislators. The two platforms, the two areas that superintendents are advocating for, and I've spoken to all of you about this, and I will be reflecting more publicly on this as well, but one is on school accountability, the opportunities around testing and assessment, and the litany of concerns that we have in terms of current processes. And then the other is school finance and funding, the adequacy of school funding, the need for just mindfulness around school funding. So we have talking points, we'll have opportunities to talk with members of both sides of the aisle, and really advocate for positions. And again, I've, I've shared, I've shared these with you just at kind of high level, but that's what will be happening on the seventeenth.
Thanks, thanks, Stu.
Yeah, just one closing thing on this, a number of the larger districts have paid lobbyists. Some of them have lobbyists that work just for their own district, others have lobbyists that they share. We don't have a lobbyist. And so the, the districts that have lobbyists have opportunities to have conversations with legislators and so on. We're a large enough district that I think we need to have a voice, and, yeah, that's enough said.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
And then our final discussion item tonight is the bond mill levy updates.
Good evening again, board. Tonight, we've talked, I would say, a lot about this, different details of this presentation, whether it be in study sessions, M P Cs, committees. Tonight, I just want to provide another overview, one for the community to hear what the thoughts are, the needs are, and then also really the plan of how we're going to implement the next steps here. So I'll go over the proposed schedule, public survey process, and then a little question answer. So again, the line of the Strive Twenty Twenty-Five, when you talk about a proposed bond initiative, this really hits all the different areas within our Strive Twenty Twenty-Five plan. So you can see, we've listed there what this provides and what enhancements that we would be looking for. Excuse me, a little different than what we did at CASB, we talked about this. I want to talk a little bit more about the proposed timeline of activities, because we're in really a transition period. When you look at the work in progress compared to when you see the two completed areas, we've done a lot of work with communities, when I talk about communities, the different communities that are part of the M P C. So they've seen a lot of details behind the needs, and that's really the details behind what an ask would be. We're in a little bit of a transition period that we kind of know what we need, and I say what kind of we do, you know, there's a range of what we need. But now it's going to more towards, you know, how do we now communicate with the community? How do we get feedback? You know, what is the board's input in that? And how's the board, what do they need to help support a proposed initiative? And then the different pieces. So when we talk about transitioning, we're looking at more of, you know, our public survey consultants, which we'll talk about, knowledge around different presentations to communities. So we're going to be going to every school community in the next, well, this semester to talk about really this presentation, and publicly say, okay, here's our need, here are some options and opportunities to get feedback from the community. So you'll see in tonight, there's not much detail around, you know, it's, we're going for this much, it's about this much, it's, you know, this number, this number. It's just about the overall need and the process to get to that point. Towards that, June or August, when we come back to the board and then say, okay, Board of Education, we've gone to the community, we've talked to the community about the options, the needs, here's the pros, here's the cons, here's what our public survey consultant says about what the appetite is, where the, the concerns are, the, the excitements. And then that's when we get into, okay, here's the defined, or the defined buckets. So to summarize, it's taken all the information, community feedback, really getting with the board and saying, what do you need to help? We want to understand, because you're going to be on the front line, a lot of the questions. So is there information that you need from staff to help understand more? Are there questions from the community you're hearing? You know, so we don't leave anything, you know, and sometimes we leave things to interpretation. Interpretation leads to perceptions which sometimes aren't real. So is there ways that we can help educate the board and provide information to then have the information you need, then to be the, the public face around some of this? So that's the work really we're starting now. Monday, as Dr. Schaefer mentioned, we're doing a cabinet retreat. We're spending a little more time around detailing out, which one of my fellow cabinet members and excitement gets to go do some community meetings, because there are a lot of sites, so we're going to divide those out between us, and then go reach out into different schools specific to each community. In the last month, I've met with every principal, I should say that, after Friday, I'll have met with every principal, and we're asking for a community, an influencer from their specific school group. So the schools also have someone that is, can be educated around what the ask is, the details around the bonds. So when they're, within their school communities, you know, we're not there every day, there's someone there that can make, they can attach to and get questions. So we are going to hold a couple of those meetings with the school leaders, and then we're going to invite in some other business leaders as well to the meetings to try to capture more of a bigger influencer group, they're going to understand the certain needs of the, of the proposed initiative. So that's really the work that's starting now. You'll see there's some conversation and my recommendations about, well, when does this actually happen? You know, if the board so chooses to vote to go, you know, that's in the June, August timeframe. So right now, it's really the staff work, getting the community, whenever that happens, and then transitions into more of a campaign section. And then from there, it goes, you know, more campaign to actual ballot initiative. So I just want to hit the timeframe now of what the thinkings are, our next steps, as we move forward. I just want to talk a little bit about the Public Opinion Research Service, some survey company that we're hiring, so Magellan Strategies, they specialize in public opinion research. So they're going to research and reach out to our community to understand, not just really about a school bond initiative, but it's asking and understanding, what is the perception of the district? What are the pros, what are the cons, what are the concerns? So it's a little deeper than just asking the community, you know, what if we do this? What would you do? That is a question, yes, but then it's, it's digging deeper into, okay, if you're saying no, what are some of the concerns? So it's going to provide a pretty in-depth input and, and data for us to all look at and then decide, okay, what are the best next steps for the district to take? You know, so going through this process before into the districts, this is a pretty pivotal piece to this whole process. You know, without this, you know, we as in district staff and leaders don't really, we hear the community, but this gets into a whole nother level of data that will help us determine the next steps and size and tax increases and all those pieces that could be associated with, with an initiative. So I will just quickly go through the overall needs. So as I mentioned before, didn't, we didn't dive into a lot of the details, but that's the work we're going to do. But when you look at the overall needs, so the Masterband Committee took a look from twenty twenty-four to twenty thirty and said, okay, in this next future snapshot, what are the needs of the district? So you can see just the maintenance needs, so that's just the building maintenance, is, you know, approximately two hundred ninety-four million. Classroom educational enhancement needs, so that's looking at more specific classroom needs, whether it be I L C rooms, bathroom needs, you know, other needs that specific schools need, just for the more classroom educational enhancement. Safety needs, so we're in the middle of doing the physical safety attitude to say, okay, this secure best fuel needs this, cameras and those different pieces. And then overall demographics, so that's obviously a bigger piece of, one of the bigger pieces, and that's growth. So that's, we'll talk a little bit more about what that looks like here in a minute. When you look at the overall maintenance needs, there's a large chunk of the two hundred ninety-four million, and it's made up of high priority needs, so that's code compliance safety. So we do have code compliance safety issues that, because our schools are not of the twenty twenty-three model, they're some of the nineteen seventies model, that there are some code compliance things we need to work on that have been identified. So that's the high priority. When we look at, what do we have to do right now? That's that, there's about forty-nine million worth of high priority. Medium priority needs are, okay, if we don't get this within the next year or two, we're going to have more issues down the road. So roofing's a good example, ventilation is a good example of things that we don't start addressing on a larger scale, they're going to start breaking down, not just repairs, but a bigger breakdown. And then it's, when it says low priority, it's not that there's not priorities, it's just lower because it's not in the first, basically, one to three years, it's the three to seven years out. So same philosophy as the middle need, middle priority. If we don't do something in the next three to seven years, then we're going to see a significant cost increase because of the impacts it's going to have of, of pieces breaking down. And that's what really shows on the next chart, is those are all the systems within our buildings, and then this breaks down into what components we need, we have the most needs in. So you can see electrical equipment, H VAC, asphalt, roofing, plumbing, playgrounds, you know, those are some of the higher ones, athletics, fields, some of those pieces that are just either at their life ends, their, their lifecycle end or nearing. So if you were to total up all these graphs, that equals the two hundred ninety-four million. But you can see that's the higher sections of needs. I will note that the H VAC, the current number that's shown here, you know, it's the sixty, say sixty-five million, it's not, there's not included air conditioning, so that's just fixing the current systems. Electrical equipment, that's more about lighting, so a lot of our building have the old fluorescent bulbs and bells. Anyway, it's updating into what we have here, more of the L E D. So those are some of the, just the components that are of high needs. Overall district safety needs, so it's, it's about twelve million. Secure best fuels slash physical upgrades, so there's a little more than just secure best fuels, but when you look at Bill Reed, you know, they don't have best fuel as, like, here, a lot of our other schools. So how do we fix that? So that's a lot of what that's looking at. Physical system upgrades, that's just key cards, cameras, that we've. Physical system upgrades, that's just key cards, cameras that we put in the last bond, continuing that, those systems. And then radio amplification, so we work with our first responders, and a lot of our buildings have poor radio signal, so there's either teachers or admins box in the building that can't actually talk to each other because of the type of structure we have. So it's putting in amplification systems within the buildings and then to help with the radio amplification. Overall educational enhancement needs is about 23 million. You'll see there is some here for CTE program enhancement. So this is a this number is just based off current needs, this the 9 million that's depicted here could really expand to every high school, you know, a larger expansion at TCC. So this is just, okay, if this is the need right now, this is the minimum need that we can see for the education enhancement piece. The education program enhancement, so as I mentioned, there's about 11 million there, that's for ILC space needs, toilet for motion and physical safety. So there's a lot of different pieces that we've noted, and that was really with interviewing principals and students to understand what's the needs of their building. So that's what, there's a large list, which I have not included here, but that's what is included in 11 million. And then innovation space upgrade, so a lot of what we heard it from MPC was, oh, River View is great, they have, you know, space like you see up there. Even at older schools, they don't have that. So how can we integrate some of the more modern spaces and create some equity within our old schools? So that's what that 3 million is there, it's just to help provide some upgrades and just more innovation space to the different schools. All right, I'll spend a couple more minutes on demographics and growth needs. There's a little more to talk about here. There's two areas of the district that we have looked at, so Borro, Berthud, and the East Level and Johnstown-Windsor. So really want to talk about that, that's like the Centaur area, and then the entire Berthud area down south. And it just included the overall district enrollment trends, so you can see the green is the state trends of enrollment, and the blue is TSD enrollment. So it's not untypical trend right now in K-12 that enrollment throughout the entire systems are declining. And I'll ask, I don't know why, so if someone's asked, well, why is that? There's a lot of theories as to why, but I, yeah, there's there's too many theories to understand, and this is exactly why it's happening. If you look at just the Berthud area, so the two blue circles are where Berthud and Ivy are now, the two yellow circles are the two school sites we have. So the one on the upper left is the TPC golf course, so we actually have a school site not too far from the clubhouse there. And then the yellow circle by the number five, that's Farmstead. So that's really east, a little bit east of Berthud by Kindred One, by Kindred One there. So those two school sites are available. I will say there's a caveat with the Farmstead is with the current economy, the developer's not developing as fast as they once were, so that site keeps pushing out. So it's in there like phase three, they're quicker, you know, they're not that far out. So there is a little concern with just the timing of that site with when we would need to help with the growth in Berthud. So hit, we've looked at, we looked at the growth in Berthud, there's really two options we looked at. So one option, which you'll see here, is here's the trends for the projected growth in Berthud at Berthud, Ivy, and Turner. If you look at just the trend line, so just the line says trend, that's just taking the growth for the last five or 10 years, trending it forward. So not anticipating anything, just saying, okay, the development's going to be kind of the same, and we'll just trend that forward. So you can see by the 2030, if you look at Ivy, for example, the trend line's 554. What we anticipate here is a little more aggressive growth, so when you see the asterisk next to the medium, that's where we're saying, okay, by that 29, 2030-ish, that's the projected growth in those schools. So we've taken the trend, but then we've also said, okay, there's other developments coming, as we saw in our previous table, so what is that going to do? You know, I say it's probably between medium and trend, but for planning purposes, we went kind of the higher side, just to make sure, you know, we have have the seats covered. So this first option is to remodel Ivy, Berthud, and Turner. So it would be to remodel the existing buildings inside and then do an expansion to all three of those schools. We'll see some renderings here soon, but the goal is to get about 335 seats in K-5 and about 125 seats of 6A. So out of the renovation option, that's what if we, well, we can do that within this option, and that's what we would capture seat-wise, and that's what this chart shows in the bottom right, is if we capture that many seats, the capacity will be at, we'll be able to hit it, so the capacity we'll capture within the building, the enrollment will be able to capture within the new capacity of the renovated buildings. So this would also include full air conditioning, you know, upgraded interiors, a similar remodel to that you would see at Lake of Amiaran, to where, you know, the shell's still there, but it's a new face, it's it's new insides of the building. The second option we can see is if there was a new school, so for example, we had to take some liberties and just kind of guess, so if we did do one in the Farmstead, here's what the projected numbers would be at Ivy, Berthud, and the Farmstead. So you can see there actually a Berthud, you know, it's built for 550, so it stays under the capacity it's built for now. The trend, say, at Ivy is about 475, and then Farmstead, you know, going even out seven years, goes in about that mid-300s size elementary school. Regardless, that still captures the growth that's seen from there. We did as well as we had to look at the boundaries, because when you do a new school, it also impacts boundaries. So we want to show the community, especially when we talk about Berthud area, about here's what this could look like. It's it's easy to say, okay, here's the school, but then how's it actually going to impact where, how you divide kids? It's a pretty complicated puzzle, so this is just a very hypothetical boundary. I mean, if this direction was had, it would be community meetings to figure out what it actually looked like, but we had to take at least a look at how we could divide the students, the students we have in this area. So you can see this is just showing the puzzle, for lack of words, of what the new boundaries could look like if there was a new school in the Farmstead area. And these are just conceptual designs of what the buildings could look like. So this is going back to option one again of renovating Turner. So this is a new face, it changes the orientation of the school, because right now, there's a lot of congestion on the south side of the school, so this changes it to the east side, creates additional parking and pass-through, as that's an issue the school has now. It really reconfigures the entire inside of the building and adds an addition on for additional growth. And that's just a conceptual rendering of what it could look like. Again, this is nothing set in stone, but just something for us to study, to understand the cost and what it could be. Berthud L, the same here, is putting addition on, changing the front a little bit, because with the larger size, you need more admin space, so it creates different spaces up front, gets kindergarten all in one area, so reconfigures kind of the all levels of the school. And then similar Ivy, although Ivy would need a little more, because right now, they only have a gym cafeteria, they don't have two separate, so that's already an issue with the amount of students at Ivy. So the proposal would be to add an actual full gym on with a stage and have a cafeteria, so then you have two two areas, and then the classroom addition. And then this is, excuse me, a conceptual rendering of a school site's size, similar to Farmstead and/or TPC, of a new school. So this is what a new school could look like, obviously, there's different variations, as we've said in this, but we wanted to also show what the school would look like on a site that we have down there. So that's a new school site view. So that is the update and where we're at with possible bond initiative moving forward. I know there'll be a lot of conversation as we move forward, and we'll continue to update the board along the way with, one, our MPC meetings, because we have those, scheduled three of those, that's a lot of the work the MPC, also, as we do community meetings, we'll gather that information and compile that for a full report to the board, and once Magellan's fully engaged, they'll probably engage here next month, we'll report back on their findings, too, so we can kind of work through all this information, data as as it evolves.
Thank you, Todd. Questions?
No, I'm just curious, I mean, I'll be interested, one of my questions was going to be about when we would hear from Magellan and stuff, and you just kind of answered that at the very end, so in the next couple months, it sounds like.
Yeah, so they have all the information right now, they're putting together survey questions based on all the data they have, and we'll get a copy of that to the board so we can see, you know, is there any adjustments we need to want to make? Yeah, within the next month, they should have a draft, so we're, it's starting, so they're engaged now.
Well, it's interesting, I'm glad, I mean, I like that you've met with meeting with the principals and getting the influential people involved.
And what else to mention, too, we have a team, actually Kristen and Tammy, they're going to do student input, so they're going to, so we're taking care of the community, but then we have a whole nother plan for just student input on this process as well.
Anything else? You still awake, Ellen?
You know, the one thing I was thinking is, since this is what you're going to use, instead of low priority, I think we should probably label that like three to or five years, three years plus priority, because people are going to see low and they're going to think that we're going to put ice cream machines at every desk or some something like that.
True.
Right. Right, that is a lower priority, so like in five years, we could get to that, that'd be great. But you know, I mean, since you.
Low priority also says, could say, not important.
Yeah, yeah, and obviously, it's not that.
Carefully.
I think the high and medium are fine, but.
Anything else? All right, thanks, Todd.
Yeah.
Are there any requests for information for anything else for coming up meetings at all? Okay, then I'm going to declare this meeting as adjourned.